The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that never endorses any political party or candidate. Our purpose in hosting this forum is to provide you with the opportunity to learn more about the candidates so that you can make an informed voting decision. The League encourages active and informed voters. We welcome all who are interested in joining us, learning about the issues that we talk about, visit our website, which is l w v-bloomington at l w v m n dot org. As you just heard, Election Day is Tuesday, November 4th, and last Friday, we started early voting here at Civic Plaza. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask you, do you have a voting plan? Do you have a voting plan? Are you going to vote absentee, or are you going to vote early in person? Or are you just going to show up on November 4th? Are you going to just wait until Election Day? Is your voter registration current, and do you know the location of your polling place? If you are wondering, see one of our League members here after the forum, and we will help you figure all that out. Our forum is an excellent opportunity to hear views from the candidates. Tonight, you will be hearing from those who are running for the school board. The school board has two major roles: representing the concerns of citizens and parents to the school administration, and representing the needs of the school district and the students back to the citizens and the parents. Finally, this event required the efforts of many people, and I want to thank them now. First of all, I want to thank the candidates. Thank you for the time and effort that you have dedicated to running for office and for participating in this forum. In these days of political polarization, we can be proud of our candidates for the efforts that they have made to run positive campaigns, and for demonstrating civility in this forum that is becoming of the office they seek, and that reflects the attitudes and demeanor of our community as a whole. Thank you to the members of the League of Women Voters Bloomington, and especially to our Voter Services Committee for planning this event. Thank you to the City of Bloomington for the use of the council chambers, and thank you, audience, for being here this evening. Thank you for joining in and showing that you are involved in civics as well. We ask that you, as the members of the audience, not clap, cheer, or otherwise do anything that may disrupt the forum or the recording process. Next, I'd like to introduce Charlotte Purz, who is the Secretary of the Bloomington Parent Teacher Advisory Council. Charlotte?
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. I'm excited to share just a little bit about the Bloomington Parent and Family Advisory Council. The council is comprised of parent representatives from each of Bloomington's public schools, teacher representative, principal representative, the superintendent, and school board. And our main goal is to inspire, engage, and empower Bloomington families through collaboration with both the district and with each other. So we just want to say thank you again for being here, and we're excited to hear from the candidates.
Okay, thank you, Charlotte. Next, our League moderator tonight is Pat Robles, and she is a member of a Twin Cities League and is an experienced moderator. She will now identify the rules of the forum and will introduce you to the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to all of the candidates who are participating in tonight's forum. Welcome to each and everyone in tonight's audience. I am Pat Robles, a member of the League of Women Voters, Brooklyn Park, Osseo, Maple Grove, and moderator for tonight's forum. I've completed all the moderator training required by the League of Women Voters Minnesota and have experience with moderating forums. Before we get started, let's all get out our cell phones and turn them off or put them on silent. Thank you. The League reminds you that no campaign material, signs, brochures, cards, buttons, or clothing with candidate information are allowed in Bloomington Civic Plaza. The League of Women Voters Minnesota and our local leagues conduct candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to the members of the public. The League is nonpartisan, neither supporting or opposing any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. L W V Minnesota and our local leagues post complete, unedited recordings of forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or other political purposes. The recording of candidate forums in their entirety are the sole property of the League of Women Voters. The purpose of this evening's forum is to hear the candidates for the Bloomington School Board Independent School District 271 discuss school and education issues that are important to the residents of Bloomington. All candidates running for school board in Bloomington this year and whose names will be printed on the ballot have been invited to participate in this forum. A copy of the forum rules was emailed to each candidate. Copies of the forum rules are also posted in the lobby adjacent to this space. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time that we have. If your questions are not answered tonight, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. Here is the format for tonight's forum. Speaking order was set before the forum and rotate with each question. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement and 30 seconds for closing remarks. Not long, so. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer each question. League volunteers Deborah Sapo and Cynthia Jorgensen will time candidates' responses and hold up signs, ladies, if you want to hold your signs up, to show candidates when they have 30 seconds left and when they have 15 seconds left, and when they must stop. This forum will also have one or more, and I will gently stop you if needed, if your time has expired. The forum will also have one or more lightning rounds where candidates will be requested to answer a question very briefly, either with one sentence or with a yes or no reply. As moderator, I will ask all the questions. L W V Bloomington and I determine which questions will be asked and attempt in good faith to cover the topics of interest indicated by the questions submitted by Bloomington residents to L W V via email prior to this evening and by attendees during this event. If you would like to submit a question this evening, please write it on an index card and pass it to one of the volunteers who is collecting those cards. Those would be our volunteers in the back of the room. Card collectors raised, well, they did. They raised their hands. All submitted questions become the property of the League of Women Voters. Questions that fall into the same general topic may be consolidated to allow us to cover as many topics as possible in the allotted time. Serving as question facilitators today are Douglas Claycombe and Nancy Claycombe, members of the League of Women Voters Bloomington. This forum is being video recorded. Candidates, please speak directly into the microphone so that your responses are heard and picked up by the video. When you speak, please look at the audience, not at me. Introduction of the candidates. Now is time to introduce the candidates for four seats on the Bloomington School Board. Your ballot will instruct you to vote for up to four candidates. The candidates who are elected will serve four-year terms. Tom Bennett, Alex Blanco, Beverly Buchanan, she did not reply to the invitation to participate in this forum. Matt Dimick, Ted Moore, and Don Steig, help me, Steigoff. Thank you, Don. I'm going to get that, for sure. Tom Bennett, Matt Dimick, and Don Steigoff are members of the League of Women Voters Bloomington. Ted Moore is a treasurer for the Bloomington Parent and Family Advisory Council Board, who are participating with L W V B on this school board forum. Let's start with our opening statements by the candidates. You'll have, again, one minute each, and we're going to start off with Tom Bennett.
Thank you. And thank you to League of Women Voters for putting on this event and all the work that you guys do throughout the year to inform voters. So yes, I am Tom Bennett. I'm the current vice chair of the school board, running for reelection. My background is 20-plus years in education, mostly as a special education teacher. I even have an admin degree and have a Director of Special Education license. Currently, I'm working at Veep in the Social Services Department as a case manager, and I'm running for school board because I'm one of those people that believe that public schools is one of the finest institutions this country has ever created. It's the one place where any kid, no matter their background, or where they come from, or their ability, is afforded a free and appropriate public education, where we can hopefully get them to the best possible versions of themselves and get them ready for a career. And I'm looking forward to the conversation tonight, and that's about it.
Thank you. Alex Blanco.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I would like to start by saying thank you to League of Women's Voters for giving us this opportunity for this forum, and thank you to the audience and the people watching from home. My name's Alex Blanco, and I've been a Bloomington resident for the last 14 years. I am a Bloomington alumni graduating from Jefferson High School, and I've served as the Legislative Director for Normandale Community College, and I would like to bring that experience to the greater Bloomington area. I am also the son of a teacher who is taught over at Olson Middle School. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Beverly Buchanan, oh, she's not here, sorry about that. Matt Dimick.
Hello, everyone. My name is Matt Dimick, and I'm excited to be running for reelection to the Bloomington School Board. I want to start by thanking the League for this opportunity and for all of the ways that you help inform Bloomington voters. I currently serve as the Chair of the School Board in Bloomington, was first elected back in 2021, and have loved serving these last four years, and I'm really looking forward to what the next four years can bring. We've had a really great four years. We passed a new strategic plan. We've helped create good inclusive policies for our students and our staff. We have two brand-new stadiums that our students are playing in this weekend. It's just a really exciting time to be here in Bloomington. I've loved being able to be a part of it, and I want to keep that momentum going as we go forward. Outside of my school board service, I serve as the Director of Development and Communications over at ICA Food Shelf in Minnetonka, and also help serve here in the Bloomington community as one of the Assistant Directors of the Shokoi Program at Kennedy. And so I'm really excited to continue working in our public schools and looking forward to the rest of the evening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Steigoff. We miss you, Ted Moore. Let's do Ted Moore, and then we'll do Don Steigoff.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I'd like to thank fellow candidates for being here tonight, participating in the forum, and I'd like to thank everybody who submitted questions and is here watching or watching online. Yes, my name is Ted Moore. I am a stay-at-home parent here in Bloomington. I have two children in Bloomington Public Schools, and I'm running for school board because I believe that public education is a powerful engine of economic growth and community connection and civic engagement. I also believe that education functions best when we focus on students as a whole, when we focus on their social and emotional needs, not just the academic needs. If elected, I'll work to ensure that every student is educated in a caring and affirming environment. I will work to reduce barriers to opportunity, and I will work to strengthen our district as a foundation for Bloomington's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Steigoff.
Good evening. I'm Don Steigoff, and I first would like to also thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity this evening. My husband and I have lived in Bloomington for over 40 years. Our three children attended Bloomington Public Schools, and I worked as a parent substitute when our kids were in school. I bring leadership experience at both the local and state level. I have served as President of the Autumn Society of Minnesota, on the Coalition for Children with Disabilities, and was appointed to three state task forces, chairing one for two years. In our district, I served as Vice Chair of the Curriculum Advisory and Chair of the Special Education Advisory Council. This is my 12th year on the board, where I have served as clerk, vice chair three times, and chair twice. I think we have a great district, and I will work to keep it that way, because I love Bloomington Public Schools.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to the community residents' questions, and remember, you have one and a half minutes to answer the question. We're going to start first with Matt Dimick. And feel free to ask me to repeat a question if you happen to be the last or down the line and you need it refreshed. Matt Dimick, what causes chronic absenteeism, and how might Bloomington Public Schools boost attendance rates?
It's a really great question, and one that I don't think that we have one answer for. I think there's a lot of factors that are impacting our students today. Mental health is a huge crisis that our country is facing. Being comfortable in school, feeling safe in school, is also something that our students need to feel in order to want to come to school every day. And so I think as educational institutions like the Bloomington Public Schools, it's our job to get to the bottom of some of these problems, to help provide resources for students in and outside of school, to help break down some of those barriers so that they can come to school and learn. I think part of that, you know, is having the ability to have that free luncheon, free breakfast every day. Like, that's one program that helps get kids to school, helps make sure that they're ready to learn, and keeps them energized and engaged as they go throughout the day. That's just one problem that we're trying to fix, and this is helping to fix that. But I think chronic absenteeism is something that we have to keep working on. We have to keep focusing on it, and I'm glad that we have initiatives in our district right now where we are focusing at a building level with principals, with families, with students, to come up with solutions that work for those students. One solution's not going to work for everyone, so I'm excited to see what we can continue to do and how we can continue to combat this problem.
Thank you. Don Steigoff.
Thank you. So I think I have to agree with several of the things that Mr. Dimick said. Students aren't going to come to school if they don't feel safe. They have to feel that they're welcome, that they belong there. There's also the mental health pieces. There's also things like, maybe there's things going on in their family, or maybe there's, you know, there's younger siblings that they're trying to help with, or whatever. So there's a lot of reasons people end up late for school or absent from school, and, you know, we tried to help with all those things. One of the things I know that we have for goals with our students is academic success is better if you're in class 95% of the time of the year, so that's one of the goals that we work on in telling our students in their personal growth plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Moore.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and also agree. I think that this is something where you need an individualized approach. There's probably no one reason why we have chronic absenteeism on the rise. I will say that we have seen absenteeism on the rise on the back end of a global pandemic. This was a once-every-century event, and we're still dealing with the ramifications of that. And we need to understand that that's not going, we're not digging ourselves out of that overnight. We're not digging ourselves out of that in a year. It'll probably take a decade or more. But on the individual level, I think that what the school board can do, or what the school district should do, I should say, is communicate with parents. Tell them, you know, this isn't your fault. There are lots of reasons why your student might not want to be going to school, and we would like to work with you to identify what's keeping your student out of school, and then find a solution to get them back in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Blanco.
Of course, there's many factors that go into the absentee rate. One thing that personally I've seen myself is economic factors outside of school. Myself, I had to work throughout high school to help support my family, and because of that, I couldn't focus as much of that time on academics. I believe through certain factors, such as these free meals we've given to students, it lowers the barrier of entry. So that way, families who may not have as much funding can support to send their students to school. On top of that, some other factors may be such as safety. If a student is coming to school and doesn't feel safe in their own classroom...
Sorry about that.
Sorry. Another factor is safety. If a student doesn't feel safe in their own classroom, and if they feel like they may be getting bullied or being harassed in some way, why would they want to come to school? We need to provide proper support for these students so they feel secure to come to class and learn and get an education that we can provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bennett.
Yes, I think those are all great answers, so I'd agree with what everyone has already said. I think that coming out of COVID, I think it is a lot of mental health, and as someone who has two kids in the school district, I often have, one of my kids sometimes just can't do school, just can't make it there, wants to be there, but needs that mental health break, and is able to take those mental health breaks. I think one thing that helps us in this district is everyone has a one-to-one device, and most of their assignments, they can access at home. So even when one of my kids is at home because they can't make it to school, they're still doing their homework. So that's something that we're trying to get more flexibility around. What is school? Does the school have to be kids in their seat six and a half hours a day? Can we have some flexible learning? Because, I mean, who's to say that 2:00 PM on a Wednesday is optimal time for every kid to learn? Some kids might learn better in the evening, so maybe they could do their assignments in the evening. So there's some ways that we can try to approach that situation. But yes, as one of my colleagues already said, what's optimal is kids in school, and that's where they learn the best. So we have those goals of 95%, and that's what we're striving for. And it's a condition that we're continuing to struggle with, but we're going to keep working at it so that we can optimize learning for all of our students.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with Alex Blanco. And the question is, what are the best, this is, of course, you know, on everybody's mind right now. What are the best ways to protect students from gun violence in schools?
So something I'm a very big advocate for is our police liaisons in schools. We have them on campus for the entire school day. That way, they can be available. They can be able, in case of an incident were to occur. We have our doors in which can lock. I believe that we should continue funding these liaisons, but I think we also should make sure that we are continuing the way in which we're doing it. Currently, we have our police liaison, it's not in full uniform, but in khakis and with polos on, and that makes a more friendly environment, which students feel safe to go up to these people and talk to them and get to know them, so they can get to know Jared or whoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bennett.
Yes, I think the best approach is to be proactive and not reactive, and I think that's what we've been doing here in Bloomington. We are fortunate that our Director of Communications and Emergency Management is the foremost national expert in gun safety. He was actually at Columbine when Columbine happened, and whenever there's a school shooting, be it a Di Valdi or, you know, an enunciation, he's the one that they call. And because of having someone that is an expert in the field, that has prepared us to be in the best position we can to protect our students and staff, because that is, you know, as a school board member, my top priority is protecting our close to 10,000 students or 10,000 students and 2,000 staff members. And we've also been fortunate here in Bloomington that we have passed two voter-approved referendum for security and technology upgrades. So we have done as much as we can to secure our schools and protect, have secured entrances and locked doors and emergency protocols. There's a lot of things I can't say because we don't want to give all of our security stuff out, and so I think we're doing a lot to protect our students. And it is sad that we have to have our schools as secure as they are, but this is the world we live in, and there's nothing we can really prevent. Anyone who has ill intentions to come into our schools, but we can put as many barriers as we can so that we can save lives, and I think that we are doing a really good job here in Bloomington to protect our students and staff.
Thank you. Matt Dimick.
I would echo a lot of what Tom just shared. We have a really supportive community that has continued to invest in safety and technology that we are able to use to keep our schools safe. We've been able to pass that twice. It's incredible. We have Rick Hoffman on our team, and he leads an incredibly thorough emergency management process. I also think that we're able to develop partnerships, and we can continue to develop partnerships with organizations that are able to come in and help teach about safe gun storage, not just saying, don't have a gun, but if you do have a gun, how do you store that safely? How do you make sure that we don't have access to those things for our six- and seven-year-olds that are coming to school? How can we have those conversations around making sure that people feel safe and welcome and comfortable in our buildings, that we know that they are places where they're coming to learn, they're not places where we want these things to be happening? And so I think it's continuing to have the partnerships that we do, developing new partnerships, and making sure that all of our students from preschool through our transition programs know what they have available to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Moore.
I think that preventing gun violence is, and necessarily will be, a multilayered approach. We do a lot of things in Bloomington Public Schools here. We have managed entry systems, for instance. We have cameras for surveillance on sensitive areas, and we monitor our students' well-being to try and identify students who might need a little intervention for mental health. Beyond that, I think that we need to advocate for things. We need to advocate for safe storage of guns in homes. We need to advocate for universal background checks. We need to advocate for sensible gun laws. We need to start acting as a community to protect our students in the schools. And I think I'll add to that two things that I wouldn't support doing. I don't think we should arm our teachers. I know that that's something that some people believe in. I don't think that's their job. Their job in an emergency is not to interact with a shooter. Their job is to protect the students in a lockdown situation. You know what? I'm going to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Steigoff.
Well, I think that you're going to hear some of the same things. I think, you know, we all have kind of the same thing, but we can do layered security. We can do what we call hardened, the outside, all of that, all the safety things in our school. We can provide training for our staff, for our students, for our families. We can also plan with our partners, so the emergency, EMTs, the law enforcement, et cetera. But none of that is always going to prevent something from happening. So we have to work with how do we identify threat assessment. We have to be able to look for mental health issues and provide mental health support. We have to identify concerning behaviors, and our students need to feel safe to say something if they see something. And our families need to teach that. Our families need to know that it might be your son's friend that you heard say something. We have to be able to teach that. And one thing I would like to see us add, that I don't think we're there yet, is I would like a way for people to anonymously make that report and have it go to wherever it needs to go. I know there's groups that are doing this now, where they have it set up, and it goes into the emergency, so someone can report something anonymously, so a student doesn't feel like, you know, they're telling on their friends. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we're going to start with Matt Dimick. If ICE were to request access to one of our schools or to district data, how should Bloomington Public School respond? Cooperation, resistance, or something else?
I want to start by saying that our schools should be places where everyone feels safe to come, and that they are not worried about not coming home at the end of the day. Our schools should be safe. And it is our responsibility as a district to keep our people safe, to keep our students safe, to keep our staff safe, and to make sure that no one feels unsafe coming into these buildings or being in these buildings. Hard stop. That's where we should be.
Thank you. Alex Blanco.
If ICE were to request access to schools, I believe that we should follow the exact legal procedure. We should follow the policy in which it's done, some of which may be not letting them in initially until they have a warrant by a judicial branch, but to follow the policy down to the T and make sure that we are protecting our students from outside things as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Steigoff.
Okay. I believe that our students, staff, whoever, should feel safe, that they should not feel like somebody is going to show up and, you know, take them out for the day or whatever, or take them away. But I also know that we have to follow the law, and our principals have had the training or the conversation with what to do if that happens. I know that our district's already proactive about it and already have plans in place and have already trained people. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bennett.
I agree with what's been said. I mean, I think the first and foremost is we are here to protect all families, all students, and make sure that our kids are feeling safe. And we also have to follow the law. And a lot of what ICE is doing, they're not doing with warrants. They're snatching people off the street, they're snatching them out of workplaces. So they will not be let into our buildings unless they have a warrant. And we have just looked at our policies to make sure that that is in policy, and make sure that our principals and administrators know that if anyone comes without a warrant, do not let them in, and to first call the superintendent and then call our district attorney, because we are in the business of protecting and educating kids. We're not here for disrupting families, or separating families, or destroying families. So I think we're all in agreement with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ted Moore.
Yeah, this is real simple. No admission, no information, without a warrant.
Our next question, we're going to start with Ted Moore. Do you have any concerns about the financial or academic implications of PSEO? Why or why not?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm going to just claim ignorance on this. I'm not certain what the financial or academic implications of PSEO would be. This is a program that allows students to gain college credit in partnership with local universities like Normandale College. They either go off-campus, or they take the classes in the schools. I suppose one financial consideration might be admission to the program, and I think that if, again, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to plead ignorance on this. If that is an issue, I think we should be providing scholarships so that everybody who wants to participate is able to participate, but top of mind, that's all I can think of on that. Sorry.
Thank you. Don Steigoff.
Well, I think one of the... Well, I think one of the issues that has been discussed in the past is that there can be a cost to the district because they're not counted the same. And so it's a financial loss to the district if those students are going to PSEO every day. That was the case. I don't even know for sure where we are in it because the, you know, there's people advocating to change that. I'm not sure if that's actually the case today. But I think that our district's attitude about it was, you know, we'll figure out a way to offset that cost because we want students to be able to do PSEO and access whatever education they want. So I don't, I don't think anyone ever advocated against taking PSEO or anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bennett?
Yes, PSEO, so post-secondary education opportunities. I believe we only get 12% of the costs or the fees we would get for each student. So it is a financial impact for the district, but it's a great opportunity for students. And I'm always for great opportunities for students. And one thing that Bloomington School District has done is we've tried to, to stay in that competitive market by offering classes in our own district. So we have the Bloomington Career and College Academy where kids can go there and learn a trade. We also have concurrent enrollment classes at our high schools where you can get college credit while staying at your high school with having a teacher that is certified to teach a college class. So those are some things that we're continuing to do to try to keep those students. But also, it's a great thing. It wasn't around when I was, when I was a kid. I would have loved to be able to go to college and get college credit while the high school is paying for it. So I think it's an opportunity every kid should explore. And it's not the right fit for every kid, but some kids, I think it's a great fit. So I encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here. Alex Blanco?
As someone who went to Normandale Community College, which is a big benefit, we have a very large PSEO population. I absolutely adore our PSEO program. I believe why would we stop bright minds because of economic barriers? If these students are succeeding in school, let's let them go. The point of school is to get them ready for the workforce and be better in the, provide for the economy and be better for all of us as a whole. So let's give these children the opportunity to succeed and not let something silly as economic barriers slow them down.
Thank you. Matt Dimick?
Yeah, I'm a big proponent of PSEO and, you know, I, I love all the different pathways that we have available for our students, whether it's PSEO, BCCA, AP classes, concurrent enrollment classes. Those options for students, especially as they get into their junior and senior year, help them figure out a path that they may explore after high school. They may think they want to be a chiropractor, do some PSEO classes and be like, I'm not gonna be a chiropractor anymore. And I would rather us be able to have those experiences while they're in our education system rather than going out and not having the resources or the support to, to work through that. And so I'm a big proponent of PSEO and I hope that we are able to continue to offer that with, for our students.
Thank you. Our next question, we're gonna start with Dawn Stagoff. What would you like to do with the site of the old football stadium? Sounds like this has been a question.
Okay, what would I like to do with the old football stadium? Is that correct?
Yes, the site of the old football stadium.
For some, can I have unlimited funds to do that? You didn't, you didn't say, you know, you know, the district does not have an answer for that. We have not even discussed it. I think there's a lot of people in the community that have ideas. Some people think that there should be someone that buys it and puts a dome over it so that they continue to use it for sports. The issue with it is we don't have the parking lot. We only have the stadium. So at some point, you know, whoever gets it is only gonna have a stadium too. They're not gonna have parking either. So I don't really, truthfully, I don't have any really major ideas. I, I think it's a discussion that the board and the administration has to have yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Moore?
Yeah, I think that this is definitely a decision that's going to be needed to be made in partnership with the community. I think it's an athletic field now and Bloomington needs open, accessible athletic fields. And keeping it as one for the community would be a great thing to do. But as candidate Stagoff has said, we don't own the parking lot. And that complicates any future use of that property significantly. So, yeah, I think I'll stop there. I would like to see it used as an athletic field for the community in the future. But I don't have the answers right now as to how we're gonna make that happen.
Thank you. Tom Bennett?
Thank you. Oh, I have ideas, but as Dawn said, we haven't, as a school board, talked about it. But I love the idea of leasing it to the city for like a dollar and they dome it and then they give our, our sports teams preferential training times. So if you're watching City Council, let's talk. I think that'd be a great thing to do. If not, I would love to have a, a quick trip in this town. How can we not have a quick trip in Bloomington? That'd be a great place for a quick trip or a Canes or something like that. There, there's a lot of, a lot of things we could, we could do with that. But yeah, it is, as Ted was saying, that's something for a community conversation that we haven't had yet. I'm just excited that we have two new football stadiums, one of these high schools, which is something that, you know, I've wanted for pretty much the entire time I've been on the school board and I'm glad that we actually got, got them there and that they're ready to go and they're playing in them. And we got homecoming at one of them tomorrow. So it's gonna be a lot of fun. So come out to Jefferson and check out the new stadium.
Matt Dimick?
Well, I was also gonna say a Canes, but Tom beat me to the punch. No, I, I think, you know, I would love to see that space to be repurposed for some other sporting complex. A dome over that so that our students can practice 12 months a year, I think would be an incredible opportunity. We have a lot of students, a lot of kids that live in this community that need spaces to, to be active. And so I'd love for us to see what we can do there. But I, I love that we have this problem ahead of us. Being able to invest in two stadiums, one at each high school, is something that I've wanted since I was a middle schooler at Valley View Middle School, having to drive over to Lincoln to watch those football games to cheer on the Kennedy Eagles when I was a student. And so I, I would love for us to be able to have something new and exciting that we're able to put there. But I'm really grateful that we were able to make the investment into these two new stadiums right now.
Thank you. Matt Dimick? Oh, yes, that was Matt Dimick. That was you. Ted Moore? Well, you know, I was in the wrong way. I was in the wrong lane. Thank you for your patience with me. Alex Blanco?
I'm gonna repeat a lot of things everyone else here has said, but mostly with Dawn. I think that whatever we do with it, let's be fiscally responsible with it. Let's put something in there or convert it. We're in partnership with the community. Let's talk to city councils, talk to residents. Let's see what are our needs and what can we, even converting it to something else if possible.
Thank you. All right, the next question, we're gonna start with Tom Bennett. And what should Bloomington Public Schools do to recruit and retain good teachers?
Oh, that's a great question. That's something that we've been grappling with. I think the, the, the best thing is that we have to, for retention, is to keep the, the staff that we have here. So we have to make them all feel that they're, they're wanted, they're valued, and they belong here. And I think another thing is you have to have competitive salaries, you know? I think teachers are trying to, you know, raise a family and they're looking for school districts that are going to pay better. So we need to keep up with the, the economic conditions of, of the area and make sure that we're competitive. So we're attracting the best and the brightest teachers.
Thank you. Alex Blanco?
I'd say in order to recruit and retain more teachers, of course, keep the current staff that we have, but keep on increasing our funding for them. I feel like our teachers aren't paid as much as they could be, especially in terms of competitiveness. Let's, let's up our competitive pay rates. That way we bring in those teachers, those bright minds who can be the best educators possible and they can provide the best education for our kids.
Thank you. Matt Dimick?
I think retaining our teachers is really important and I think part of that is by building great relationships. So we have a superintendent who prides himself on having good relationships with our staff and a board that has great relationships with our staff, our teachers, our families. And I think that we can't underestimate the power of what those relationships bring when we come to the bargaining table to have contract negotiations that are ongoing. When we have issues across the district, we can lean on those strong relationships that we have built and that helps us retain teachers. But I also think recruiting new teachers is something that we really have to focus on. We currently do not have a teacher or staff base that reflects what our students look and feel like in our classrooms right now. And we have to find a way to, to get that taken care of. So we have some initiatives going on in the district right now to help recruit more teachers and staff of color. We need to continue to invest in those programs. And I want to see what we can do in the next five years to have a staff and a teacher base that looks and feels like our students.
Thank you. Ted Moore?
Hi, yes. Public education in America, this isn't a Bloomington problem, has a pipeline problem and we have a retention problem. And I know this is just about the pipeline problem and everybody else has mentioned that we need to work on retention and that's true. We need to partner with our unions to identify kind of what are the issues causing burnout in the profession? Because those might be some issues that are keeping people from being interested in becoming teachers in the first place. Paying benefits is obviously part of it, but classroom sizes, stress, behavioral issues in the classroom, these are all things that weigh on teacher well-being. And we need to, again, partner with our unions to find ways to deal with those issues. I think also, you know, we do have a development program here in Bloomington to identify kids who are interested in being teachers and to help them through the process and hopefully then they'll return to Bloomington as teachers. And I think that's something that we need to continue investing in. And I think the third thing I'll say on this is respect. This is a profession that has been denigrated for a while in America. And I think that we just need to love up a little bit on our teachers and respect them and tell them, hey, this is a profession that's honorable and what you do is fantastic. And I think we need to be cheerleaders for them and we need to, again, partner with the unions to say, please stop denigrating our teacher union. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn Stagoff?
Well, I happen to visit a lot of classrooms and a lot of buildings and I will tell you, we already have found high-quality, fantastic teachers in this district. We already retain many of them. Many of them have spent their entire careers here. I think that, yes, salaries and benefits helps, you know, I want to be competitive. But it also is about what other people have talked about here. It's the environment that they teach in. It's about feeling like you are respected and feeling that your work is valued and that people see you and see the work you basically pour into our students. I mean, if you've ever been to the first day of school, you can see it when the students are coming back and they see their teachers from the year before. It is there. They, they love and respect their teachers. So the other thing is we do have a Grow Your Own program. So it helps people that maybe financially could not get to school to be a teacher or people that maybe aren't typically thinking about teaching. We, we do, it's a program that can help parents and other people that want to become teachers. So we are doing that to also recruit teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're gonna go to a light, a couple lightning round questions. So this is one sentence or yes or no. All right? And we're gonna start with Matt Dimick. Would you support a student cellphone ban at Brooklyn Public Schools?
No.
I'm sorry, Bloomington Public Schools. Sorry about that.
The answer's still no.
It's still no. Dawn Stagoff?
Can you repeat that?
Mm-hmm. Would you support a student cellphone ban at Bloomington Public Schools?
No.
Alex Blanco?
No.
Tom Bennett?
No.
Ted Moore?
Also no.
That sounds like we have a consensus here. Next question. Do you think that there is a problem with grade inflation in Bloomington Public Schools? And we're gonna start with Tom Bennett. Yes, no, or one sentence?
Grade inflation.
Grade inflation.
No.
Ted Moore?
No.
Dawn Stagoff?
No.
Matt Dimick?
No.
Alex Blanco?
It can be a sentence, correct?
Yes, one sentence. There you go.
If, if our students are doing better, why stop them?
Okay. Great. I love lightning rounds. They're just quick like that. Let's see. We have a couple of questions on this topic and so I'm trying to combine it in a way that is gonna work. So our first, the question's gonna go first to Matt Dimick. And this is kind of a hot topic. Please share your views on the trans, on the accessibility of books and library materials to, in the, to, in the schools at different grade levels. And in conjunction with that, are books that are explicitly, explicitly addressed gender, identity, and sexuality appropriate at the elementary school level? And why or why not? Matt Dimick?
Yes, so this is a great question and something that we have invested a lot of time and energy in over the last few years. So I believe that our students should be able to see themselves and the community around them in the books that they're reading and the books they have access to in the media center. That's why we spent a lot of time and energy focusing on creating a library materials policy that ensures that every student can see themselves in the classroom materials and in the library materials that they have. We should be doing that. I want to make sure that our students who are LGBTQ or are a different race than white are able to have access to those resources and they should.
Thank you. Dawn Stagoff?
I'm gonna echo a little bit what Mr. Dimick said, but not only see themselves, but see their family. It may not be them, but it may be family members. See their family, see their friends, see their community. I absolutely agree that they should be able to see what is reflected in our community. We talk about windows and mirrors. And so having a window to see everyone else in the community, but also having a mirror to see yourself. Our children should be able to find themselves in our books. They should be able to find their friends, their family in our books. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bennett?
I gotta echo my colleagues. They said it beautifully and, you know, I'm proud to be on the school board that when we were being asked to ban certain books that some people found objectionable, that we went in and changed the policies to protect those books and to protect the students' rights to read them and to protect the First Amendment. And that's something that I think, one of my proudest moments of the past several years, when we passed that policy. And that has now become a policy that the state has modeled and they have put that into law. So Bloomington is leaders in many ways and it's just one more example. And now those, those books are protected for anyone to read for the reasons that my colleagues just mentioned.
Thank you. Alex Blanco?
I believe that we should allow access to these books for all the students. These students are going to get access to information via online or at home. I feel like we should have it in a controlled facility, controlled environment, which they can have instead of maybe rumors, but actually facts in these books.
Thank you. Ted Moore?
I think that students succeed when they feel safe, seen, and supported in their schools and when they feel that they can exist as their authentic selves in their schools. And so I do not support restricting access to these materials.
Thank you. Our next question, we're gonna start with Ted Moore. How would you increase the equity among schools across the district, especially between high, high schools?
Well, I think that we already do a lot in Bloomington in terms of equitable distribution of our resources. I think where we spend our money and how we spend our money always needs to be situated within a conversation around equity. And so when it comes to spending at the high school levels, I think you need to look at data, look at, to determine what's needed, where it's needed, and then you spend those dollars there. I know that sounds simple. I also know that it's not simple. I know that it's a continuing conversation and I think that it's something that, once you've implemented something, you need to be willing to track your progress and you need to pivot when you need, when necessary, if something isn't working. But, yeah, I think all our conversations around resources need to be grounded in equity and they all need to be grounded in data.
Thank you. Dawn Stagoff?
Right now, I would say that the board and the administration, they, they look at things through an equity lens. So sometimes someone may need more than someone else. Not, not necessarily because the other side doesn't need it, but because one side just has less financial support. One of the issues that I think we're gonna have to address though, that we haven't really worked out, is the financial difference in the boosters and the ability for some schools to help their teachers and their families more than some other schools. And that's, that is an issue that at some point we're gonna have to figure out how to address so, so we can also have equity there and make sure that all families and all teachers and all students have the same support, no matter what school you walk into in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dimick?
Yeah, it is really important to the, the health of Bloomington to have two thriving high schools and to have nine thriving elementary schools and three thriving middle schools. But our district is going to look different depending on what side of town you live on, which, which building you go to. Each of our buildings has a different identity. And I think it's our job as a, as a district and as a school board to make sure that we are approaching those differences and helping to create these experiences at each school that are equitable across the district. That, you know, Poplar Bridge may look a little different than Indian Mounds, but it doesn't mean that Indian Mounds is a bad or worse school than Poplar Bridge. It means that we are gonna have some identity around those schools and invest in programming there. I think part of the way we get there is by making sure that our, our, these programs- I think part of the way we get there is by making sure that our, our, these programs are funded, that our schools have the resources that they may need, whether that comes through community partnerships or through PTAs. It is important that we invest our time and energy in focusing on how, how we can infuse this, these resources into these schools so that we do have thriving buildings, no matter which corner of the city you may live in.
Thank you. Alex Blanco?
I think the needs of our two different high schools are very different. They both have different issues or things, problems that need to be worked on, and I think that we should work to address those as it comes. I look for inequality in outcomes in which both high schools are both getting excellent or above-excellent test scores. And I believe that meeting those schools where they're needed. So having that research, looking at that data, having firsthand accounts and speaking to these students and teachers about what's going on in their classes, what can we do to make it better for you?
Thank you. Tom Bennett?
Yes, could you repeat the question again, please?
How would you increase the equity amongst schools across the dis, the district, especially between high schools?
Thank you. Yes, I think that it's incredibly important. It's part of our strategic plan. It's one of the goals in our, our strategic plan is to, to move towards equity because it is important. And, and, you know, we don't want one side to the school. Maybe one school has a lot more programs than the other side. We want to be thriving at both schools. And we opened up two stadiums, and that's one thing we just did. And one of the things that we, we made them to make sure that one's not going to have all the bells and whistles and the other one's not. So if one has a fancy scoreboard, the other one's going to have a fancy scoreboard. So that's one thing that we want to make sure that we're doing parity that way. But equity also means that you might, it might look a little different than buildings. You might have a building that has more struggling learners, so you give more resources. You might have more intervention programs so that those kids can be successful, because that's really what equity is, is giving kids what they need so they can be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking of equity, let's see, I had a question here on equity. Diversity equity. And we're going to start first with Matt Demick. What are your views on diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools and in the Bloomington Public Schools curriculum?
I love that our schools are diverse. I've, I've lived in this community since the day I was born, and the schools look a lot different than they did when I started in kindergarten in 1997. And I love that. Our schools should be filled by lifting up the diversity and, the diversity of thought, the diversity of race, the diversity of sexuality, the diversity of gender, the diversity of religion, all of those things. I want those to thrive in our schools. Our schools should be places that we celebrate each other, that students feel like they can express themselves, that they can learn in a great way. And I think we need to invest more in, to ensuring that we have programs that support those students. I love right now that we have an Office of Educational Equity that focuses on a lot of these, a lot of our students who don't fit the quote-unquote norm. And I, I want to continue to have those programs that we can continue to invest and lift up our students that don't look like me.
Thank you. Don Steiglaff?
We are a diverse district. It's, it's not like, like, sorry, I was going to call him director. Like Mr. Demick said, we, that's not changing. It's, looks different maybe than when he was a child, but it's not changing. We are, we're growing more diverse. We are a diverse district, but we celebrate that. We have so many ways that people are learning from each other and learning about each other's cultures. And it is a wonderful thing to see some of our students together and the things that they're learning and sharing. But inclusion, everyone should be included. It doesn't matter if your diversity is because you're a special ed student or because you live in poverty or because you happen to be the richest family in the district. It doesn't matter. Everybody should be included, no matter what your religion is, your sexual identity, what, all of those things. And for equity, we do have an Office of Educational Equity. They have a wonderful leadership program that, I don't even know how many years they've been doing it, a long time, let's just say that, as long as I've been on the board. Wonderful leadership program. They also have equity specialists that are working with our students individually within the buildings to help students that may be struggling. It's a wonderful program, and they do wonderful work for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Moore?
Yes, we are a diverse district. We are a majority-minority district racially, and this is where you talk about those windows and mirrors, right? We need to have a curriculum, we need to have staff, and we need to have teachers that reflects our community. This is very important. We know from research that children of color perform better academically if they have just one elementary school teacher who is the same race as them. We know that. So that's a hiring policy around diversity that's very important for our district. That's just one example. So this is something that, as a school board, we need to be investing in and we need to prioritize around because, again, if we're not educating all of our children, we're failing as a school district. And, you know, public education means you educate the public. Everybody who comes through those doors is welcomed and educated equally. So, yeah, I guess I think that it's something that permeates everything that we discuss and everything we decide as a school district.
Thank you. Alex Blanco?
Due to the makeup of Bloomington, our Bloomington schools are already incredibly diverse. And to allow access and the ability to learn from these different cultures, ideas, makes our students better critical thinkers down the life, down the road, when they can see these different aspects of life and where they can think for themselves and make their own decisions. It also allows them more opportunities when they get out into that real, real world in which they can already have these experiences and they know a little bit about these different things.
Thank you. Tom Bennett?
Yes, I think everyone said really fine answers. I agree with everything everyone said. I think that, yes, our public schools are a reflection of our public and our community, and of course, everybody's welcome. I think that we also need to do a better job, as, as I think Matt answered earlier, and having our staff look more like our students. And that's something that we, we are doing. We're taking initiatives. We are, are doing, you know, Grow Your Own programs. But I think it's also important to have culture-responsive teach training for all of our staff. It's something that not just those that interact with kids have taken in Bloomington, but everyone has taken culture-responsive training, including board members, because I think it's important that even educators, we're not just here to teach kids, we're also here to learn from kids. And in my 20-plus years of teaching, I learned something from my kids all the time. And might be their culture, might be their religion, might be, you know, their family makeup, anything. But I think that's important that everyone has, is welcome, everyone belongs, everyone is embraced, everyone is celebrated.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with Alex Blanco. How will you support para-professionals? What ideas do you have?
For me, our para-professionals do amazing work. They meet these students where they're at and try to provide the best support possible. I believe in continuing support, both with competitive wages, but also giving them those proper classroom sizes. If one para-professional's handling too many students, that isn't okay. It's, it's stressful on them, and that leads to low retention and them not being able to do it and burnout. I believe that we should meet these para-professionals where they're at and try to help them, boost them, and give them the support that they need because they truly are doing incredible work with our students.
Thank you. Tom Bennett?
Yes, para-professionals, some of my favorite people in the world. As someone who's spent, you know, 20 years of a special education teacher, I would have been nothing without my para-professionals. They're an integral part of the IEP team and the classroom, and oftentimes, they know the kids better than the teachers do. So I think the number one thing we need to do with, with para-professionals is respect them as professionals. They're not teacher aides, they're not assistants, they're not there to make copies for you. They're there to work with kids and to help those kids succeed. And the more that we can include them in the planning and the environment of the school community, the better. You know, I think the challenges are that para-professional, sometimes their, their hours match those of the students, so it's always difficult to find that time to be able to have the meetings, the team meetings with the, the special ed teachers and the para-professionals. So I think it's things that we need to invest in and, and giving them those meeting times so they can be included. So yes, I have nothing but love for the para-professionals, and of course, we need to do what we can to pay them competitive salaries and pay them what they're worth. And sadly, with funds the way they are, we can never pay para-professionals for what, what they're worth, because they should make them twice as what they, what they currently make. But, you know, little respect, relationship, friendship, as, as Matt was saying, it's a lot about relationships, what we're doing in Bloomington. We're keeping our staff here because I think they know that they're wanted, they're valued, they're respected. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Demick?
Yeah, I think there's four things that I think we need to focus on when it comes to our paras, because they do such incredible work and such thankless work a lot of the time. And it, it's just a, they are a crucial part of what we do. So the four things I think that we need to invest in are training for our para-professionals to make sure that they know how to do their job, they feel that they have the, the skills and the tools in their toolbox to do the work that they need to do. We need to give them the resources to do their job, and that includes fair wages, fair benefits, fair time off, all of those things. We need to make sure that our paras feel like when they leave work, they're still supported by the school district. We need to give them support in and out of the classroom, so that's building the good relationships with people, making sure that their teachers and the, the other staff that they're interacting with view them as team members, they invest in those relationships and that they're able to do that, and that they are seen by everyone and lifted up in a way that is, I think, really meaningful, helpful, and appropriate for the work that they do for our students.
Thank you. Don Steiglaff?
Well, I agree with everything my colleagues have said, but I also will say, I used to sub as a para when my kids were in school, the years they were in school. That's what I did for a job. And one of the things that was really hard when you walk in as a para sub is you don't know anything about the students that you're going to have that day, and it's really helpful if they can just give you, if you come as a sub, a little bit of information about those students. And so I think that we have gotten a lot better that, in the district. We actually now have a para mentor that works with our new paras to help them. And I think there's also some training for para subs now. And the biggest thing, I think, is professional development, time for that, because they need to know about their students and they need to know how they can best help them and provide all the supports they need, because we could not have our special ed programs without our paras. They are absolutely essential to the education of all of our children with IEPs. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Moore?
Well, I'm going to go last and sound like a broken record. I agree with what everybody has said. I think that our paras are incredibly important part of our educational system, and I think that they often go underappreciated. And I think that the way that we can start to make meaningful change is, yes, we need to invest in career professional development for our para-professionals. That includes money and time off for that development. We need to work on boosting pay and, and benefits for our para-professionals. And of course, budgets are constraints, but we can advocate at the state level for state-funded $25 minimum salaries for our para-professionals. That's something that we should be doing every year until it happens. And I think, again, I'll echo them and say that, respect. We need to have dialogue. We need to, you know, respect them as professionals, listen to what they're saying, and incorporate that feedback into, you know, how we manage the classrooms or, you know, whatever day-to-day issues are arising for our para-professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted Moore, you get to go first this time. In reducing the carbon foot, is reducing the carbon footprint of BPS a priority for you? Why? If, if so, what actions would you suggest?
Excellent. Yes. I think it should be a priority for everybody, and I think Bloomington Public Schools is already embarking on this path, and I think we should continue down it. We are purchasing 13 new electric vehicle, electric vehicle buses, or do you just say electric buses? Electric buses, which is awesome. Not only does that help reduce our carbon footprint, but, you know, electric buses are quieter, they're better for students, they're not inhaling diesel gasoline on their way to and from school. There are benefits to electric buses beyond reducing our carbon footprint. And then solarization, we've already begun that. We're putting solar panels on our rooftops. We have a lot of rooftops that could benefit the district in terms of helping to lower our electricity costs, and this is something that we should continue. As to why we should lower our carbon footprint, well, that's a conversation that's a little bit beyond the school board, but I do believe that, you know, human-caused climate change is real, and I think that the more we can reduce our carbon footprints, the better it is for the environment. And I'm going to leave that answer at that, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Don Steiglaff?
If you've watched improvements on our schools this summer since construction, many of our schools got a large array of solar panels added, so we're already doing that. They're on the schedule to have more done. We, we realize that we, you know, we have a lot of buildings, so we do have a big footprint. We are working on it. The other things, as Ted said, we have, are ordering electric buses. We are trying, I do believe that we should do it. The only other thing I could think of that I can add is like our lunchroom even. We sort all the biodegradables. We're trying to cut down on our waste, too. We sort biodegradables, we sort, we sort the recyclables, all of those things. The students are all trained when they go through the lunch line, how to sort their food when they, or their trays when they throw their stuff away. So all of those things, we're trying to lessen our footprint. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bennett?
Yes, this is another issue and where Bloomington is a leader in the state. I mean, as, as the people before me said, that we are electrifying our, our schools and putting electrical panels on the roofs, and we are, over half of our energy comes from solar power. And as Ted was saying, we just got 13 new buses. Those are paid for through grants, so it's not costing Bloomington taxpayers anything. And it's buses we can put into our fleet and see if they work for us. Because, yes, we, we need to do for the, the environmental reasons, but also we save money. We save millions of dollars on energy with the volatility of, of carbon fuel, of, of gas and oil. You never know what's, what, what energy is going to cost. So we save money by having solar panels. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Alex Blanco?
Similar to what I've said before, I would love to go and be more climate-focused, but my big focus is fiscal responsibility. I am all for, let's put some solar panels on roof, because in the long term, it'll save us money, but also can we afford these solar panels in the first place? Are the needs of our students being sacrificed to change out our buses to electric vehicles? I want to make sure that we're being responsive with allocations and make sure it's going where needed. But yes, I would fully support more green energy as a whole.
Thank you. Matt Demick?
Yeah, I love that we have spent some time, energy, and resources over the last few years investing in our, in green energy. Having our new dozen buses that are coming along, I can't wait to go for my ride on this first new electric bus. I love that our students are going to be able to do that every day. I love that, you know, we have solar panels on 50% of our roofs across Bloomington and that we continue to add more. We're continuing to find ways to, to rethink how, what our energy structure looks like. I also love that our students are coming up with ideas and running with projects. So over at the Kennedy Courtyard, they, the students and the Green Club applied for a grant to completely redo the courtyard to turn into a green energy learning space. They've gotten grants for 100 new trees on that property. And that's just happening at one school. There's things happening across the whole district, where our students are taking the lead and there's teachers are taking, are playing a supportive role in helping invest in what the future will look like for these students in 20, 30, 50 years. And I, I love that we are getting to be a part of that right now.
Thank you. Our next question, we're going to start with Tom Bennett. How do you prioritize expenditures in light of a deficit?
Well, I think it's a great question and it's a timely question, because we are in budget cuts. Every school district in the state is going through financial problems. And I think that what we need to do is try to prioritize keeping the classrooms protected and try to make those cuts as much as we can outside of the classroom. And that is easier said than done. I mean, we just had to repurpose an elementary school last year because we have fiscal concerns. So we have to make wise decisions, and it is difficult, and it's getting harder and harder. And so, I mean, a lot of it is advocacy. We do a lot of time, the school board, we advocated the city, the state, and the federal level, trying to get funds so that we can continue to invest in our schools. You know, the funding for schools has not kept pace with inflation for the past 20 years, which is causing a huge impact to our schools. So I think the more we can advocate and then have people that are making smart decisions, that are making smart decisions, trying to minimize impact from the classrooms is the best way to move forward.
Thank you. Alex Blanco.
Would you mind repeating the question one more time, please?
How do you prioritize expenditures in light of a deficit?
It's very, very complicated to break it down, but multiple, multiple facets here. Most importantly, allocation. Where are we allocating our funds? Where is it going? On top of that, comparing price points. Are we purchasing the most expensive product just because, or is there a comparable cheaper product in which we can get better? As well as certain cost-saving measures. Let's look at our budget sheet. Let's see, where do we need funding? Where can we cut back a little bit, and without sacrificing the education of our students?
Thank you. Matt Dimmock.
Yeah, I think the, the budget is the hardest thing that we do as school board members right now, especially in this time where we do not have enough resources to do all the programs and projects and supports that we would like to see in our schools. So I think part of that requires us having conversations with community members, with staff, with principals, with students, and seeing what, what are the things that are essential for us right now? And how then do we take those conversations and come up with creative solutions for how we get there? Can we apply for more grants? Can we advocate for more funding from the state and the federal level? Yes, and we don't always know that we're going to get that money. And so we've had to make some really incredibly tough choices. And I know that we're going to have to continue to make tough choices unless we suddenly have 500 new kindergartners, in addition to the 700 kindergartners that we're already hoping for next summer. And so, you know, it is tough, but I think part of it is that we need to have people at the board table who have an understanding of what we're doing, an understanding of how school district budgets work, and who are willing to listen to folks as we have these tough conversations and move through these decisions. Thank you.
Ted, Ted Moore.
I think that first, you know, to ground this conversation in equity, you need to look at site-specific issues rather than district-wide cuts. You need to really engage your stakeholders, identify your spending, how your spending aligns with your priorities and your core values, and work on a site-specific level. In terms of my priorities, I agree with candidate Bennett. I want to keep cuts away from the classroom as much as possible. I want to, you know, protect classroom integrity. I think that this has a couple of important impacts. It's important, it impacts, you know, teacher well-being in terms of class sizes. It impacts, you know, the quality of the educational materials we can afford, and it impacts the training that we can implement for those educational materials. Another priority is I want to continue funding extracurricular activities. Bloomington does a great job of offering a wide variety of those. And again, when you look at what drives student success, engagement is the key. And extracurricular activities drive engagement. You can find what interests a student, and you can get them involved in the school community outside of the classroom and in ways that help them thrive. So I would say those are two of my priorities when looking at budget deficits. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Steigoff.
No one runs for school board thinking that they want to make budget cuts. It has turned out that most of the 12 years I've been here, we've had to do budget cuts. At first, I would say that, you know, we did what we called the low-hanging fruit. But then pretty soon, the low-hanging fruit is all gone, and you have to move on to other things. We have worked very hard to keep it from the classroom, but I know that it's not always possible. We do have to raise class sizes sometimes because we don't have any other option. We have worked as our board, our superintendent, our administration have worked to advocate at both the state and federal level for, for budgetary increases and more funding, and, you know, like, things like on the cross-subsidy, where we have unfunded mandates that aren't covered. So we've worked to try to increase the funding for those mandates also. We have not kept up with inflation for, I don't know, 20-plus years. So it is always going to be an issue. But one of the things we did do, we made what we call the guiding change document that helps the board and the administration work through all of, like, what we call our untouchables, the things that no one's willing to compromise on. Thank you.
This is going to be our final question before we go to closing remarks, and we're going to start with Matt Dimmock. What is one skill or experience you have or have had which has not yet been mentioned that makes you highly qualified to serve as a Bloomington School Board member? Matt Dimmock.
Thank you. You know, I think one of my biggest strengths that I bring to the table is that I have lived in this community for 33 years since the day I was born. I'm a product of our Bloomington Public Schools, went to Indian Mountains Elementary, Valleyview Middle, Kennedy High School. I have helped coach the show choir program at Kennedy for the last 10 years. I've, I've been a high school teacher, so I've been, I've been involved in this education system for many, many, many years. I've built incredible relationships with people. I see some of my students in the crowd tonight. Like, it is an incredible gift to be able to serve this community and to have those relationships that I've been able to cultivate throughout my life, and to bring those experiences to the board, whether it's talking to teachers because I had them as a teacher, or talking to students because I see them every day, talking to families because I've interacted with them at some point. I think that that's one of the skills that I bring to the board that has really helped me in the last four years and would continue to help me in the next four.
Thank you. Alex Blanco.
Most of all, it'd be that I am still a student. I am on that level still. I still, at my college, Normal Community College, our local college, I am the representative to the capital. I go and I lobby for them. I, when they were talking about cutting grants for the North Star Promise, I went up to Wiki Land, our Eastern Bloomington representative, and I said, "No, we can't do this. We need to stop this." And I'm on that level. I see firsthand from students. That's most of all what I want to focus on, is where are our students? Let me listen to them. Let me see what your problem is. Why are you struggling in class, and how can I make it better? And I want to make it better for every single student we have in this district.
Thank you. Don Steigoff.
When my kids were in school here, I was a very involved parent. I understand how the district works because I've been involved in for a long time. I was involved as a parent, and then I was involved as staff also. And then, since then, on the school board. But the other thing is, when I was appointed, I mentioned earlier, I've served on three state task forces in Minnesota. Why I was appointed to those, I was appointed once by the Bureau of Mediation, by the commissioner there, once by the Republican majority, and once by the DFL majority. Because they know that I'm there about getting the work done and doing what we can to collaborate and come to consensus to help everyone. So I think that I bring that experience of being able to work with just about anyone. We had people that were, let's say, on opposite sides of issues assigned to those. So I think I bring that experience of consensus and working for the common good. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Bennett.
So something I haven't said before, so I can't say teacher, I can't say parent, so I guess I'll go with humor. I like to bring the humor sometimes. You know, we, we got to do a lot of serious stuff and have a lot of, you know, serious conversations. And sometimes, you know, it can build tension. And it's nice to sometimes be able to blow off a little steam and have a little fun. And we try to do that as a board. I think we're a board that really gets along with each other. And we, we might go out after meetings and, and, you know, have dinner together. I think it's important to have those kind of relationships, and so that we can get to know each other away from the table. And, yeah, so that's probably something that I bring that I think that helps make us better board members, because we don't just see each other at the table, and we don't just see each other when we disagree as adversaries. Because we might, you know, go out to dinner afterwards and get to know the person behind their philosophies. So that's about it.
Thank you. Ted Moore.
So I'm going to focus on one experience, or I guess a collection of experiences. As a stay-at-home parent, I spent a lot of time in the schools when my children were younger, participating in doing reading assessments, or just hanging out with kids and in the classroom and helping out where I could. And as a product of public education myself, I've always just supported it reflexively. But as somebody who is not a teacher or an educator, and who hadn't spent much time as in the schools outside of being a student, being back in the classroom was really eye-opening and amazing, and it deepened my appreciation for public schools, for the professionalism of the teachers and the staff, and for the way they interacted with the students. And really kind of supercharged my interest in public education and making it be the best that it can be. I'm kind of a super cheerleader for it now. And so I think that that experience really drives my passion for making our public schools the best that they can possibly be.
Thank you. And guess what? I was kidding. We'll have one more question. How will you update the community about school board issues? And we're going to start with Don Steigoff.
How do I, or how will I? I'm sorry.
How will you?
Okay.
And how do you, or how will you?
About school board issues? Well, we've just started something new. We're now doing a summary that goes out with the district email of what happened at the school board meeting. We just had our first one, so it's brand new. Some of the other ways are just informally. I'm active in the community. People see me. They ask me questions. I have discussions. I visit schools, all of those things. One of the other things that I have talked about that I think would be interesting or would, would maybe be beneficial is the monthly Melby has been very popular, if everyone knows what that is. That's the superintendent doing his little video. And then I know a school also did a video to teach how the parking would go this year, or how the drive-up, I should say, and drop-off would go. So I think that could be another way that we could benefit. We could do more videos and talk about, you know, things going on in the district and decisions that were made, those types of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dimmock.
So this is an area that I've been really passionate about exploring over the last four years, and especially this year as the chair. So like Don said, we recently added a school board update in some of our parent communications and our teacher, or inside pages, which goes to all staff across the district. That's also going to be accompanied by a quick two-minute video highlight of what we did at the school board meeting each week. So those are some of the things that we're doing right now in the moment. But I do think that decisions are made by the people who show up. So it's important for us to be showing up at our schools, to have those conversations with our staff, with our teachers, with our students, with our families, and to be the biggest cheerleaders for the district. As Ted has said, like, cheerleading this district is part of the job that we are going to do here, lifting up the work that we're doing and finding ways to do it better. And so making sure that we're connecting with folks. I think, you know, having these videos, having these emails is a great mechanism for us to do that. But I think that there's more that we can continue to do, and I'm excited to see what we can, what, what new things we can put together.
Thank you. Tom Bennett.
Yes, thank you. That's a great question. Those are some great answers, and I agree with them. I think we, something, there was a community survey last year, and that was something the community wanted. They wanted to hear more from what's going on in the school board meeting. So that's why we started doing the videos, why we started doing the, the wrap-up of the, of the meetings. But it's also important to, you know, meet people where they're at, be out in the community. You know, there's a saying that the school board hat doesn't come off, you know? You're always a school board member. Whether I'm at the grocery store or I'm at a school, I'm always there in the community. And I welcome any conversation when people have, have questions about what's going on in the school district, what the school board's doing. I think that's important. I think it's also important for us to have a presence on, on social media. I know social media can kind of be, you know, difficult, and we don't want to spend too much time on the social media, but it's a way that people are communicating with, that we can reach more people so that they know, you know, what we're doing in the school district, and what initiatives we're doing, what policies we're passing. So I think those are some of the things that we need to do, or we are doing, I should say.
Thank you. Alex Blanco.
I think communication with the school board goes hand-hand with communication in our classrooms. I'm a big advocate for transparency, and most of all, open communication via these newsletters, via these digital platforms. More and more people are using Facebook every day, having those videos, those posts, showing our parents what's going on, so that way they can see, hey, this is what's happening in your school's education. On top of that, I want to reach out and allow parents to be involved in that decision-making process. Let them have a say in their children's education and what's going on, and give them the opportunity to tell them, hey, come to us. We have these newsletters. Come see what's going on. Get involved.
Thank you. Ted Moore.
One thing I learned in my days in the PTA is that to communicate with people, you need to offer them 1,000 different ways to do it. And so, yes, there are things that the school board can be doing in terms of newsletters, but I think the most important thing that I could do personally is, as everybody has said, be out there in the community. Each school board member is, you know, an ambassador to three or four different schools. Get in those buildings. Talk to the parents. Talk to the students. Talk to the teachers and the staff. Attend their events. Go to the plays and the sporting events. Go to the concerts. And make yourself seen and make yourself known, and people will find you. And when they know that they don't have to say, oh, I'm going to see Ted in two weeks, I'm going to tell him something then, but instead, oh, if I don't see Ted, I know I'll see him here, 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 and here, then that just makes that communication channel so much open, or freer and easier. So I think that would be my primary, primary way of keeping people informed.
Thank you. All right, now it is time for closing remarks. 30 seconds, that's not a lot of time, so we understand. And we are going to start first with Don Steigoff.
I'm running for reelection because I think experience matters. I think being connected to our district matters, and most of all, because I believe in the promise of public education. Please reach out to me if you have any questions. I hope I've earned your vote. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you. Ted Moore.
Well, thank you again, everybody, for being here. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting. Yes, I'm Ted Moore. If you'd like to learn more information about me, you can find my website, tedforbloomington.com. But, yeah, I hope I've earned your vote tonight. I'm a champion for public education. I'm a champion for our schools. I think we have a very strong school district, and I want to continue, continue it to be as strong as possible. And, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dimmock.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, and thank you to the League for this opportunity. It's been the thrill of a lifetime to be able to serve the community that I've grown up in and made my home for the last 33 years. And I would love the opportunity to continue to do this really incredible work. We've done great things, new strategic plan, new stadiums, new early childhood. The list can go on and on and on, but what I'm excited about is the future, getting to continue to serve this community, seeing what we can do. And so, please, I would ask for your vote tonight. And if you have more questions or want more information, head to my website, mattforbloomington.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Blanco.
First of all, I say thank you to the League of Women Voters, and most of all, thank you to all of you. You guys could have been anywhere else on a Thursday night, but you guys chose to be here. And that shows a certain amount of civic engagement that isn't seen much anymore, and I really appreciate it. Most of all, thank you, guys, for giving us this opportunity, and I'm excited for what the future holds. If you have any questions at all, please reach out via my email. I'm more than happy to answer any of them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tom Bennett.
Again, thank you to the League, and thank you for everyone being here, and thank you to all the candidates. I think we had a great conversation tonight, and I wish you guys all the best of luck, and I hope you guys all tie for second place. So you've heard from the candidates, I want you guys to go out there and vote. You know, we have, most of our residents in Bloomington don't have kids, so they think that they, in school, so they think that they shouldn't be voting. And I want to break that mindset. Everyone should vote. These are the most important elections, are the local elections. So get out there and vote for city council, get out there, vote for school board, and happy voting.
Thank you. I have to say, we had so many wonderful questions from the audience, and I am sorry we don't have more time to, to ask more questions. So I encourage you, if your audience, if your question was not addressed this evening, that you reach out to the candidates. I'm not sure if they'll be hanging around for a few minutes afterwards, but reach out to them and have your question answered. Thank you so much, candidates, for participating in this forum and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office to serve our community. Thank you to the City of Bloomington for technical expertise and the use of the council chambers. Thank you to the League of Women Voters Bloomington for sponsoring this forum, and thank you to this evening's volunteers, and really thank you to the audience for being here. This forum has been video, video recorded in its entirety and can be viewed unedited on YouTube. The link will be posted on the City of Bloomington website and on the LWVB website. It will also be rebroadcast on Bloomington Cable TV until Election Day. Thank you to future online and cable TV audiences. If you're interested in finding out more about what the League of Women Voters does, please pick up a membership brochure at the registration table, or visit us at lvmn.org. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age or older. Members believe in defending democracy, the rule of law, and the right of citizens to vote in elections. Remember to vote on or before Tuesday, November 4th. For information about registering to vote, voting early, and voting in person, visit the Minnesota Secretary of State's website at www.mnvotes.gov. Audience, you are invited to visit informally with the candidates and the League members immediately following this forum. This concludes tonight's forum, and audience, you can now applaud the candidates.